Our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see if I have my, uh. All right, so first is the approval of the minutes. Oh yeah, we do have an extra chair, Bob.
Yeah, Bob.
I'm spread out.
He likes it back there now.
Okay, so I know some people had some comments on the minutes, so if anybody, didn't you say you had?
Um, I think the minutes after the essential topic and agenda discussion, you know, there were some typos, there were some other grammatical and the part of them. I've given to Heather, you know, my thoughts.
Microphone, yeah.
You're right there, thank you very much.
Okay.
It saves me from getting emails.
I've given to Heather my thoughts and my edits in that regard, but the content is all there, and so I would move to accept it.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, that sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we have citizen comments only for items not on the agenda. If anybody has a comment not on the agenda, please step forward to the podium. Now we have the planners, and it looks like Nakomas Ford is here. Would you like to come up?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm coming to you tonight about the annual report. We're seeking to get Planning Commission input into the 2017 annual report for the county, just to see if you have any comments about what is currently drafted, and if not, then we'd be looking for your signature of approval on the letter.
Okay. Does anybody, I know last month we had two chapters. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Annual report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't hear it.
My mistake. That's what Heather emailed to us.
Right, and do you have those, Arco was gonna send along those chapters with you tonight?
Oh, I didn't know, I needed to bring hard copies of.
Okay, well, that's okay, we can follow up with those. Now, Arco explained that the signature would be required next month?
And that's fine, if you don't.
Okay, okay.
I don't think we've seen it.
Well, I forwarded.
Yeah, Heather emailed, I was, I misspoke earlier, but Heather emailed it to us.
The entire, the initial draft in its entirety? Arco was gonna send along the chapters to be handed out tonight, but we can, that's okay, we can connect, and I can forward those out to the Planning Commission prior to May 21st.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Anything else?
Just letting you know that we did make those updates that you recommended to the bike ped plan last month, so they are on the website.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And Tim's not here, Tim's not here right now.
And Tim.
Yeah, what's up with Tim?
He actually went to the National Planning Conference in New Orleans. So he was gone last week, so I imagine he has some catching up to do. But we'll touch base and make sure he's here for, see if he can be here for the May 21st meeting.
Okay, next is the site plan or subdivision plan for Brittany Manor.
Yep.
And you, you wanna do your government report first?
I'm just gonna do some highlights.
Okay.
After last month, I figured I'd just summarize that a little bit.
How many trees die a day?
We gotta recycle this thing.
So I'm gonna go through some highlights of the plan.
Do you guys have a copy of the table?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there any way we can set these up for people to look at there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, there's a, look, everybody's just giving away their plans.
You don't have any room.
There's one of these on the table, it is hard to see.
Why, you tried?
So this is the preliminary subdivision plan for Brittany Manor at Twin Arch Village. This is a project that has been in discussions with the town since 2009, so we're definitely happy to see it get to this point. The applicant is requesting preliminary subdivision plan approval for the establishment of a 73-lot residential subdivision. The subject parcel is 53 acres, and it's of R2-zoned land, and it's situated on the northeast side of Twin Arch Road. This parcel is adjacent to the Twin Arch Crossing Townhome Community and the Twin Arch Industrial Business Park. And the subdivision will be accessed directly off of Backacre Circle, which we know is the main collector road for all of the residential and industrial amenities back there. The concept plan for Brittany Manor, Twin Arch Village subdivision, was conditionally approved at the April 25th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting, so just a little over two years ago. And since that time, the project has been undergoing a stringent stormwater management review. So congratulations to Mr. Thompson for being able to get it to the point where it can be presented tonight for your approval. The preliminary subdivision plan reflects the approved concept plan with respect to the overall site layout and open space provided. The plan continues to propose 73 single-family residential lots, 72 of which are grouped towards the northern portion of the parcel. The architecture of the dwelling structures have not yet been defined, as a builder has not been selected, and I believe that's pretty typical at this particular phase. That being said, at the zoning administrator's request, the developer has provided a sampling of typical housing styles that would fit the proposed building footprint for the building envelope. So one thing noted in the staff report, all units will be certain to have at least one garage unit to account for their parking spaces, so you can expect to see that. The plan continues to provide 16.3 acres of open space, and this complies with the requirement set forth in Section 9823. A total of four neighborhood parks are proposed, two larger multipurpose fields, and sort of like playground areas, they may be tot lots, with also two smaller pocket parks are located, you know, in the vicinity of the development. Something that we're very excited to highlight is this project comes with a walking trail. If you look towards the bottom of the, you probably can't see it there, but if you look towards the bottom of the development, there is a walking trail along the old railroad bed. It's a 15-foot wide walking path, and it is proposed for dedication to the town for future incorporation into the town's rails-trails network. So it's something that will develop, but we're definitely excited about that in conjunction with this development. APFO certifications are provided in the staff report, just as a brief rundown. The water and sewer allocation was approved for this project, allotting 18,250 gallons per day for 73 single-family residential lots. The preliminary plan does not increase the demand for water and sewer over this previous allotment. Schools continue to be adequate at this time based on 2017 and 2021 enrollment period. This was the adequate threshold capacity certificate that was approved for the concept plan. This has been reaffirmed to still be valid just in this month. So I reached out to the facilities planner, and there is a copy of that certificate in your packages. Roads and traffic control devices were considered adequate pursuant to 25-5D3, and the specifics of that are outlined in the staff report.
Can I interrupt and ask a question, or do you want me to wait till the end?
Sure, can we wait till the end?
Sure.
Because that I'm gonna direct to Mr. Quinn. If you have questions as far as that APFO, okay? Fire and Rescue Services has returned a certificate of adequacy. This adequacy will, or I'm sorry, this agency will review the improvement plans, which is the next phase, just to make sure that the plan continues to ensure compliance with their previous comments. And just to note, the improvement plans are your engineer, like finalization on your engineer and infrastructure, so they don't actually come back to the Planning Commission. Police services are deemed adequate. The Mount Airy Police Department is expected to bring on its 10th officer in the fall of 2018, which will serve the existing population and the anticipated population yield of 219 persons from this development. Now, Parks and Open Space is the only public facility deemed inadequate at this time. Our current population would require about 300 acres of Parks and Open Space, and right now, we're sitting at about 152 acres. However, there is a provision in the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance that does allow the Planning Commission to authorize a waiver of the Parks and Open Space standard, provided that the subdivision itself provides three acres per the population, at least three acres per the, 100 persons generated from the development. Okay? And this development does that, in that it provides basically 7.64, 7.7 acres per 100 persons. Okay? The developer is also requesting a waiver of the 3% intersection approach grade to permit the intersection approach grades to be between 3% and 5%. A copy of the waiver has been included in your staff report, and the project engineer, Mr. Ron Thompson from Van Marne Associate, is present this evening to speak more, in more detail as to this waiver if needed. And staff does have some recommendations on this plan, as we always do. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission waive strict application of the Park and Open Space adequacy standard as the development project meets the standard for a waiver by providing 7.47 acres of park and open space of the projected population from residents in the proposed development project. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission waive strict application of the Town Code Section 9816I to allow the proposed intersection grades between 3% and 5%. And lastly, staff recommends that the Planning Commission conditionally approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Brittany Manor at Twin Arch Village to allow the project to move forward to the final plan phase, subject to the following condition. And as always, all final town and county agency comments are to be addressed in the, and that should actually say the improvement plan phase for Brittany Manor. Project engineer is here to answer questions, and so is staff.
Good Barney, I have a question.
Shall I, well, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, ask.
So around the traffic, so I recall from 2016 when this came out, this was prior to us doing the Route 27 traffic study. And one of the concerns was the traffic coming out from behind the Y Shopping Center out onto that major intersection and the impact on that. And I think we said we were gonna wait for the traffic study to do anything, so I just didn't know what the impact was from the traffic study on doing this project, if there, we decide, we might have already talked about all this, I'm just trying to remind myself.
That's fine. So naturally, anytime you do a development, you're gonna add some traffic, and it's gonna be a little bit more than what you have now, which, you know, is not very favorable. But our code does say that if we're having less than 2% impact on that intersection, then that project can move forward.
And this is less than 2%?
It's less than 2%.
Was it included as a potential impact when they did the Route 27 corridor study?
Yes, Brittany Manor was, every development that we foresaw coming down the road, and even the vacant properties, were all considered adding traffic.
And so when the grade came out on that intersection, it included that potential impact?
Yes, yes. And improvements do need to be made, as, you know, in the future. But again, this one project can move forward if it has less than 2% impact.
I remember the conversation about every single project could have 2% or less, and all of a sudden, we've got a massive, it's all, ah, it's all coming back, okay.
And that's, that's provided the adequacy does not fall below a level of Service D.
And we're at D now, right?
We are, we are at a D.
Okay.
And so if something were to come along, even if the 2% would make it go below a D, this standard could not apply.
So that 2% or this impact on this is not going to take below a D because that was already considered in the backboard?
Absolutely.
Got it.
But it's also true that going back at least one, maybe two, at least one master plan updates, we had a vision of an extension of Century Boulevard, providing another access on the 27. That kind of vision to distribute, to distribute what will be a collective growth in traffic, okay?
But that hasn't, that's probably not gonna be done before.
No, it's not.
No, 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 that won't be done, I'm just saying that's the future, and that is a very real option that we need to understand as a planning commission, okay? We're gonna need that at some point.
Roxanne, did you have a question?
Heather, you were saying there's one lot to the south, kinda like by itself, can you point that out?
Yeah, it is.
Or Ron, you can, it's right there, okay, that's the one I was saying, okay.
Yeah, and recall, this is the area where the cul-de-sac of 10 homes was proposed to be, and then there was some discussion as to the allowable lot yield. And so they had to reduce the lots by 10, so they just made that into one single lot.
One single house, one single lot, okay. Ron, did you wanna comment on traffic or anything else?
Ron Thompson, Van Marne Associates, it's a pleasure to finally be in front of you for the preliminary subdivision plan. And here on behalf of Twin Arch Family Associates and Doc Full. Staff report was rather complete on it. We did do a concept plan, a detailed traffic study as was required by Town Code, which identified that 2% or less criteria for it. So, and as a refresher, we, I think, had somewhere in the neighborhood of 82 or 84 lots, and when we went through that formula, including proposed roadways, it went down to the 73 lots.
So there's less traffic.
There's actually probably less traffic, yes, for it. So we are at the stage, it took quite a while for stormwater management approval, sometimes regulations get in the way of good common environmental sense. But we finally were able to complete that design, allowing us to move forward into what would be improvement plans for it. We're prepared to answer any questions that you have and look forward to the town's approval tonight.
I have a question about the grade at the intersections that shall be 3% or less. So what's that in practical terms, that if we have it 3 to 5?
So just to give you an idea, like in a parking lot, ideally, you wanna have 5% or less. So even a road at 3%, it's even more level than that. So, I mean, 5% is really not that bad. But we did, we did have the road that approaches Backacre Circle meet the 3% criteria. It's just the roads that are a little further into the subdivision.
So as a comparison, how about the municipal parking lot over here, which is clearly at a higher elevation?
The entrances coming in are certainly much higher than that, yes.
But it still might be okay for skateboarding, a little bit fine, a little bit fine.
So how about the approaches to Twin Arch and 27, that intersection?
Oh, I'm guessing that's 8% or so.
I mean, it's substantially more.
So 3 to 5 is actually fairly modest?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and it meets that?
Yes.
Well, there's a lot here, anybody have any other questions for Ron or for Barney, for Rachel?
Well, I mean, just to comment, that, I can't recall now when this got started, but I think it's a significant design template because it's the original mixed-use property design in the town, okay? And it's interesting to look and see the diversity of the various components of it, and how it's played out.
Exactly. Residential, commercial, industrial.
It's all there. And the modifications that y'all have made most recently, it makes a very complimentary extension of what's already in place, okay? So you've done a superb job, and you've been responsive to our requests for the open space considerations and all of that, so.
Yes, like the open space.
I do have one question, just procedurally. Whether or not the water allocation needs to be approved tonight also? It's something authorized, there's one at concept, and then one at preliminary, and I wasn't sure.
I thought we took care of that at concept, we took out that allotment because.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're.
So just at the time, we reevaluated this point, which we did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Right, as long as it doesn't, yeah, because, and we designed that so that when you moved forward, you had your allotment at concept.
So at this point, it becomes locked in. Thank you.
Ron, do you have a sense of, you've been through quite a process to get to this point, do you have a sense of construction or when you're gonna be seeking contractors, the developers for that?
Well, I can tell you that the improvement plans are probably about 70% complete. If any luck, we'll file them in May. And any, 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 any luck, I'd love to see them being done by the end of the year, which could maybe be next year, early.
Do you have a contractor that you're looking to work with?
We do not. I think that the Full family wanted to make sure, before, there's been a lot of interest.
Oh, I imagine.
But before serious discussions took place, they wanted to make sure they had an approved project. I've been here too many times with this.
I might have asked this, Ron, at a prior meeting, but is the intent to have a variety of housing sizes? I know, I know we talked about this being a little bit less expensive than some of the other housing around here, so.
I would anticipate that this would have, say, five or six different types of homes. I mean, typically, when you have a 70 to 90-lot subdivision, you'll have five or seven templates that a home builder would offer in order to maximize their potential in the market.
Okay.
That's, would be up to the home builder.
And those sizes were thought to range, like, between 700 square feet to 2,200 square feet.
1,700.
Did I say, what I said?
You said 700. You turn around and lose yourself.
You know, it goes with the small house initiative, you know, so 1,700.
Tiny houses, tiny houses.
I was trying not to say 17,000, that's where. So 1,700 to 2,200.
All right, does, any more questions, discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll do that. I move that we conditionally approve the preliminary subdivision plans for Brittany Manor at Twin Arch Village to allow the project to move forward to the final phase in the following conditions. Number one, that we waive the strict application of the Park and Open Space adequacy standard as the development project meets the standard for a waiver by providing 7.47 acres of park and open space of projected population from residents in the proposed development projects. Two, the staff recommends that we waive the strict application of the Town Code Section 98-16I to allow the proposed intersection grades between 3% and 5%. And finally, that all final town and county agency comments are to be addressed in the improvement plan phase for Brittany Manor.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Okay, so we have no new business, and our unfinished business, 2018 Planning Commission work plans, goals. Do we have anything to discuss about that? That's where, one of the things that we have done is is provide the action plan that Heather drafted to our, to the liaisons, and they were supposed to be giving them to the commissions. So do we have any feedback on that? These people are talking.
Bye, Doc Full.
Thanks, Doc.
All right, thanks. All right. Do I need to repeat anything I just said, or you guys got it? So we're trying to implement, basically, we're trying to implement the master plan.
The first and foremost mission and role of a municipal planning commission is the upgrade of the town master plan on a regular basis.
Right, which we've done.
Yep, it used to be every five, six years, and that was impractical, and now it's more like eight to 10, okay? This particular plan, I think, more so, and this is the fifth upgrade to the Mount Airy master plan since it started in the early 70s. This one really lays out a very comprehensive, balanced vision. It's a vision that takes into account, we love what we already have, we have some remaining infill space, but unless there's a compelling reason, we don't see a need to do wholesale annexation, okay? We're concerned about making anything new complimentary and fit with what we already have, right? And I think that that's a significant, from a planning perspective, balance between all the unique characteristics of this community and keeping in mind, there are opportunities, there are planning needs going forward in terms of refreshing our population with the opportunity for some infill and the attraction of additional families. We have a school situation, enrollment situation, that's troubling because of adequate public facilities requirements, okay? But the vision that was laid out.
Sorry to interrupt, but isn't our school situation a concern because the county might be closing our school, rather than our school being overcrowded?
And the reason for that, well, I don't wanna get into county politics, but, yeah, it's a problem.
Right, I mean, we have sufficient, the schools are adequate.
They're adequate now.
For our population, in fact, they're under adequate, so I just was trying to clarify that. I was just trying to clarify that. All right, so.
So where I wanna go with this is that the thing that was different about this master plan update was that we reached out to the other commissions. And we said, each of you have a special focus. We need for you to weigh in on this development. You need to give us your goals with regard to your specific commissions, and they did that. So what we're doing now is simply reaching back out and say, now we need the team approach again to implement it, and we started on that. We need to stay in dialogue with them, and we will.
So Bob, have you talked to anybody? Has the Economic Development Commission linked at their stuff?
They get them, now, because of the difference in the meetings, sometimes their meetings are the same week as ours, sometimes they're the week before us. So we haven't really had a chance to sit down and talk about it. They have received their copies, everybody's got it.
Okay.
I built up care of that.
Okay, but we don't know, there hasn't been any discussion?
There hasn't been any discussion.
Okay, okay. All right, so hopefully, and I think, Mr. Dershowitz, are you still on the EDC? Okay, so hopefully you guys can discuss at your next meeting this handy-dandy action plan, and what the EDC would like to do to help implement their part. And so, anyone else, do we know, any other commission? I know Bill, you've.
Just an add to that a little bit?
Yeah, why don't you come up to the podium?
Just to add to that, certainly, your input to us is valuable, all right? Just as it is with all the other commissions. So it's a two-way street here, you know, and certainly, you know, if you have comments or suggestions for us. So it's a two-way street here, you know, and certainly, you know, if you have comments or suggestions for us, you know, we'd like to hear them as well, you know, and there's things that we can work on to implement because, you know, working together, as we all can do here, you know, makes a big difference, so that was my comment.
Frank, another opportunity we have, and we purposely created the timing for this, is the downtown master plan and bringing those consultants in and looking at issues that we know we have with the downtown area and their multiple objectives, you know, with that RFP. So the intent of the timing of doing that now is to have that part of this as well, because we're all going to learn a lot from it.
No question, yep, I mean, and we've been working very hard as of late to try to pull the businesses together, you know, in a concerted effort downtown here, you know, and share a common goal and a voice and all that. So, and I honestly, I think we've come a long way just in a short period of time here lately.
Even just doing that is not complex, right?
Exactly, yeah, you know, and so that will tie in nicely with the comments and the suggestions and hopefully the future that this master plan will produce. So, you know, we can work as a conduit through that side of it as well for all this, you know, so, you know, want to stay open with that.
And when, when is your meeting, in May?
It's the twenty.
Fourth, fourth.
Yeah, the fourth, twenty, twenty-fifth.
You guys are going to be on the twenty-first.
Yeah, so you're a Wednesday.
Wednesday night, yeah, mhm.
Okay, okay.
That same week, so it, once again, it's a report that ends up a month behind.
Okay, right.
And we may even have another, another meeting prior to, we have another meeting if the Mondays fall, right?
Yeah, well, we're having ours on May twenty-first because of Memorial Day, yeah.
So we'll be two days after that.
Yeah, okay.
Liza.
Okay, yeah.
I, just FYI, I attended the MAMSA meeting, the last MAMSA meeting, and I was very disappointed at the number of downtown, but yes, there was only one, two, three representatives for the downtown area. And there needs to be an actual shift in that whole thing. Every single business in the downtown area needs to come to that meeting. I was in a, I was in a Main Street town, I was in Salisbury when I had a restaurant, and that's, it's huge for everybody to work together. And I know that there's been issues and problems and stuff, but it really needs to, I don't know how to, you can't put a magic wand on it and it needs to go, but it needs to, it needs to happen.
No, you're absolutely right, I mean, there really wasn't much togetherness in this downtown, you know, at all and, you know, I'm really starting to see it turn here now. The chamber is doing a lot as well, and I, you know, I think it'll come around, Roxanne, but you're right, it's going to take a while and then, you know, personalities are always an issue with whatever you do, so, you know, we'll work on it, we're trying.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion about our action plan? Okay. All right, so the next unfinished business is consideration of Planning Commission rules of procedure. And I didn't bring copies, do you have any copies of the land use article?
I think Bob has.
The one Bob handed me.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me see if I can find it.
We can share one.
Got it. Thank you. Here it is, under here, I found it.
Oh, this one, oh, okay, I actually have that. Okay, does it have the land use, I have the site, I have the site, I just didn't bring a copy of the, the land use article.
And I did not ask that, but I can give this to you?
I mean, if anybody wants to see it, I know what it says.
I wasn't sure if I was providing that or not.
Yeah, well, I think it's fine, I mean, just to, just to, yeah, so everybody has seen this before, this was the draft from a couple of months ago that was handed out, and then there was some discussion about whether the Planning Commission had the authority to create our own rules of procedure and guidelines. And Heather had referenced the land use article, which is, the state land use article is what actually governs the Planning Commission. And there is a provision in the land use article, section two, one oh five C, that not only allows us and authorizes us to create procedures, it actually requires us to do so. So, and I think Heather has a copy, if anybody wants to see it, you can also look it up online at Lexus, it's free. Just land use article, section two, one oh five C, number one. Says shall, you shall, the Planning Commission shall create guidelines which govern its meetings.
Now, yeah, not, right, so these are not, these are not required, but we're just getting over the issue of, yes, we are allowed to
and are required to promulgate our guidelines to run our meetings and things like that. So we can discuss this and have any other, yes, go ahead.
Okay, also, I didn't bring it with me, but also on the Maryland Planning Commission Association website, there is a Planning Commission duties and responsibilities document, it's about thirty-five pages, so I'm not going to go through it all. But it basically says, actually, probably should have been, you know, handed out as policy to each new commission member. It's very good and it's in-depth and detailed, and my opinion is, you know, we just take the time to look at this one as well and I'll email it to you, because I think this one, it goes into the relationship to the law, it goes into your responsibilities, our roles and our functions, takes care of the participation, decision-making, the ethics is in there. And I think it's a, and I thank Heather for doing what she did to go through, and I think Middle Towns kind of mirrors this, they just put in their own verbiage, but I think that this is an excellent document that we should, we should use because it's part of the association that we belong to.
All right, well, that would be great, Roxanne, if you could email that to everyone, or email it to Heather and have her, whichever works.
What?
Wait, hold on, Bill, it's Bob, it'd be awesome if you could come sit at the table where I could see you. Do you have a microphone?
Yes, I have a microphone.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, I have some issues with this because as an elected town councilman, we have rules and regulations that we have to deal with. One of these things right here, ex parte communications, which are defined as meaning communication that occurs outside a formal Planning Commission meeting. Okay, now, I'm elected by the people and I talk to them everywhere. If they ask questions about anything that's before the town council or the Planning Commission or before any, any information I have, I pass on to them. So, being denied the opportunity to talk to the people, you know, with the traffic plan or anything like that, this, this won't allow me to do it because it's an, it's an ex parte communication because it doesn't happen at this meeting in front of this group.
I think what this is referring to, if I recall from previous conversations, is that it doesn't keep you from talking to anybody about, you know, being presented tonight at the meeting is all about a new development that's coming forward, and there were discussions around traffic things or whatever. What, what it would prohibit you from saying is, we, I, on behalf of the Planning Commission, are saying that I'm concerned or that there's going to be an issue around the traffic and that we think that there's going to be a major problem with this, when that might just been part of a discussion and it wasn't voted upon. That's what this is referring to, is that.
That's not what, that's not what it says, commission members shall refrain from ex parte communication, meaning communication that occurs outside a formal Planning Commission meeting. That's very clear, I am not allowed to talk about anything that's before this body, okay? Which I'm not, it's, you can't explain it any other way, okay?
Yeah, I just recall this discussion that we had last time. But the thing is, and I don't know what the language in the one you have, Roxanne, if it, you know, and I think we even discussed then, we can tweak the language, but the, you know, the issue, there's a few issues. What Judy just said is definitely one of the components, which is that not, you know, one commissioner doesn't go and present your individual opinion as, as the view of the Planning Commission.
I don't do that.
Right, and that's, that's, that's a major component of this. Now, I think.
I get my opinion from speaking to the.
Yeah, you can, you can certainly always, you can certainly always listen to what anyone has to say to you. It's only if you're trying to, like, if somebody is coming before us to present and you start having discussions with them about what they're going to be presenting and give them ideas that might, you know, say, oh, you can, you can get, you know, get one over on the Planning Commission if you do this, now that would be inappropriate.
Right.
But not listening to your constituents is not, and you can certainly say.
I don't say anything to anybody in this town that I would not want to stand in front of this commission and say.
And you can certainly say, this is what we're going to be discussing, come out, you know, before I was even on the commission years ago, there was someone on who would email, you know, and say, hey, they're going to, we're going to be talking about this or this, this proposal is, you know, this goodwill proposal way back when, you know, you might want to come to this meeting. Not like, okay, let's have a little pow-wow ahead of time and I'll tell you what to say. So that, that's the difference, it's not, it's, if you think of it like if you're in court, you know, you can't, you can't, if you're a lawyer, you can't call up the judge and have a meeting with the judge without, you know, the other side being informed. I mean, you just can't try to, but, you know, I don't think it has to be that language, that's not.
This is my objection, there's several things in here.
Well, why don't, well, why don't we, you know, Roxanne's going to email this other one and take a look at that.
But I will object to anything that tries to take away the voice of any person that sits at this table or is on the town council because our jobs are to communicate with our citizens as to what they want us to do, not what we want.
We will have, I'm sure, another draft and then eventually, we will vote on it and you will have your vote and we'll see what happens. I know you wanted to say something, Bill.
Well, I, I object to this formal structured language because if you truly grasp and understand what the role and the purpose and the responsibility of being on this commission are about, if you sign up for that, if you're fully engaged and you are dispensing that responsibility, then you don't need a nineteen fifties thou shall not kind of a code.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be nineteen fifties, no.
It doesn't have to be nineteen.
We can update it.
It doesn't have to be two thousand and eighteen either. This is professional.
Well, I think it's interesting because you are involved in these.
Are you going to let me finish or not?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
It's, it's the tone, it's the intent. What we are about is facilitating the best planning for the best purposes of our town, our community. If you sign up to be on this commission, you're signing up to do that. You're not doing that.
People don't always know the rules, though, you know that?
There's, there's a training component.
That's what Roxanne just said, this is part of a training component.
No, 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 it's not, no, it's not. It's above and beyond that, let's take a look at it, let's have more discussion, and let's have, let's have an open discussion about it.
So what I was going to say is, I think it's interesting that you're very involved in, you know, the Maryland Planning Commission Association and all these, you know, you send out all these eighty-five page publications, but the land use article says we're required to have guidelines. So you're just going to be like, oh no, we can't, we can't have guidelines, even though that's what our governing statute tells us that we have to do?
I'm going to say, yes, it may have been law at one time, but I'm going to say, I don't think it's practical. I don't think it's necessary. I think if we're signing up to do what is our job, we don't need that.
But if it's a mandate, if there's something in law that says we are required.
Do you have it there?
Governing standards, it doesn't mean it has to be detailed like this. It doesn't mean it has to be thirty-five pages, which Roxanne is talking about. It just has to be a document that governs how we, what we do. I mean, I guess us, I'm set on board of directors and sitting on any board of directors, there's a government.
They have many.
Guidelines to do.
I do currently.
Can I ask a question? So, where is this coming from?
That particular draft?
Well, the intent of the draft, like, how did?
From the land use article.
From the land use article?
Two one oh five C, it's the land use article. And that particular, Middle Town has been cited, or, you know, has been referred to as, you know, a commission that does good things, so I went to their planning commission. And those, that draft reflects pretty much what Middle Towns does, except for switching out.
We met, we met there, I think she was their attorney who Bill really, really liked at the Eastern Conference and thought they were doing amazing, great things.
Right, and that's why, that's why Middle Towns.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
That's why Middle Towns stuck in my mind, because I know that there were some compliments thrown in that way.
Yeah, exactly.
I think if you take the time to look at this and I'll send you the.
Yes, please do.
I mean, I'll send you the link or I can send you the, you know, download it and put it on because you have to go through two or three different things to get to it, but it is a resource that they did put out. And I think that if you look at it, it is very general, but it meets the requirement of what's, what we're to do. And it's more of a common sense thing than, you know, don't do this, do that, don't do this, do that, which I think, I mean, we've all been in those situations where we've had to say that, but I think we're also adults and have enough common sense that we can know what to do and what not to do.
Yes, Bob?
The whole, if you read the very first line, similar to other jurisdictions, the town of Mount Airy Planning Commission may determine that it is in their best interest to consider the formal adoption of administrative rules and procedure. We are not here to see what is best.
I'm not sure where you're reading from.
Is that my draft?
That's the very first line on the, on the page.
Okay, okay, gotcha. It's the email.
You want me to read it again?
No, I thought, I thought you were reading from the draft, I didn't realize you were reading the email.
You are not here to determine what is in the best interest of the Planning Commission. You are here to determine what is in the best interest of the citizens of the town of Mount Airy. That's your goal, that's your focus, okay? And this letter introducing this talks about what's best for the Planning Commission.
Well, that's something that Heather wrote, I mean.
Not necessarily best for the people.
I guess we will have to run it by Tom.
Okay.
We'll just run it by Tom, I mean, since there's so much concern about its legality.
This is, this is not right.
We'll just run it by Tom. It's like, it's, I mean, it's in, it's in the law, you know, so, I mean, like, like, what do you mean fuck the law, Bill? I mean, seriously?
Can we go to the next item of business, please?
I'm just, I don't quite understand the, this reactiveness, it's very strange. I get what you're saying, Bob, I mean, I get what you're saying, I don't really understand it coming from this table, though, because you're on that table over there, especially in light of, you know, all the rules that, that we get emailed constantly from Bill. All right, so Roxanne, you will send that one out and we can, whoever chooses to review it can review it and then Heather can talk to Tom and.
Sure.
We can figure out whether he needs to come to the meeting or just issue a memo or whatever he wants to do. Can you give that back to her?
Thank you.
And the question you're going to refer to Tom is whether we need them and if so, the level of detail? Or just whether or not we need them and we can go from there, or any advice you might give us along those lines?
Well, I guess a good place to start is, is it within the Planning Commission's purview to adopt such regulations and?
Is it within their authority?
If it, is it within their authority?
And if it's not, what is that provision doing in the land use article, what does that mean? Like, what does he think that that means?
And I'm not questioning that, okay? I'm not questioning the, the Planning Commission's authority to do this. What I'm questioning is the words. authority to do this. What I'm questioning is the words written down on this piece of paper.
Right. And we can change, and as I've said, we can certainly change the guidelines.
I just wanna make sure that we do not muzzle our town council when it comes to talking to the citizens.
Yes. That, that, yeah, I think we've all been understanding your position, Bob. Thank you. Alright, so, where are we going next? I think we're about done here, right? Okay, consideration of, Bob, council leaders report Harrison LaShire update. Excellent.
On Harrison LaShire, the water test is being evaluated now. I think Barney is, is pretty much bringing that to an end, correct? Water, water test is done and as far as Harrison LaShire.
Right, it's, it's in the state's hands, basically, right now.
Right, we're, we're waiting for that. Okay, and I have some other things here. Basically, I don't know who is talking about it, but EDS, MAMSA and the great, great Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce are meeting collectively and we are attending their meetings to help define everybody's areas of responsibility. So, we're, we're working on that. Pretty soon, on May the sixteenth, the farmers market will start three to seven in the, in the rail yard parking lot every Wednesday, three to seven. Don't miss it. It's upgraded again this year.
Oh, good. It's awesome.
More vendors, twenty-one vendors at each, each weekly sale. The downtown master plan is working. The steering committee has a March, or I'm sorry, May the eighth, a meeting at six, six o'clock in the evening.
Yep, six to seven.
Six to seven in the evening. So, you know, it continues on. When you hear about these meetings, go to them and get your two cents on the record. Okay, it's very important.
Wait, wait, people can't, aren't invited to the steering committee.
You can't go just to the steering committee.
No, no, you can't go to the steering committee.
Right, right, right.
As you see, as you see meetings that are for...
The public and the charrettes and stuff.
And, right.
Hey, um, do you know when they're getting the website up?
We were told on Friday, it's very soon.
Okay, okay.
Right?
I was absent from that meeting, but I believe that would be correct.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's what they're working on right now. Steering committee meeting on May the eighth.
So, if anybody doesn't know, I mean, most, you probably do, but there's the downtown master plan consultant and they're supposed to be, so there's a steering committee, which is mostly, I think, the chairs of all the commissions and then some other folks, like council people.
A couple of people, a couple of people on the council and staff.
Yeah, and actually, are you on that?
And I don't.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And so, they're supposed to be generating a website soon so that at least people can have a way to go get information about what's going on.
I got a couple more things on my board. So, downtown master plan, when you see it's scheduled for you and go to them, okay?
Right.
Um, let's see, we have something really neat now. We have an ATM open to all right next to this building. The Carroll Community Bank next door. So, that's pretty cool. And the chili cook-off is happening May the twenty-sixth, ten to five, and it's gonna, we, we have it due to the cancellation of the five to eight inches of snow that we're gonna have on April the seventh. And as soon as we got it canceled, they started backing off from that. And it never did snow. I, we had some, we did have some snowflores early that month.
But it's cold.
But that's pretty much my report.
Too chilly for chili. I have a question going back to the Harrison LaShire. And I know, 'cause I think Barney had given us some information about the water, but do we know anything about the actual agreement between the county and Mount Airy?
There's, there's not really an agreement between the county and Mount Airy.
I mean, I mean, the work, the one that's been in the works for a few years, like...
It's still in the works. You have, there are things that need to be done in order. Maryland Department of the Environment now has to get on with the agreement about water, about how much we're gonna use, how much they're gonna use, whether it can be used for residential, commercial only, you know, it just, there's so many things that are coming into it. So, you know, we, we keep meeting, we're, we're due, as soon as we get some information from MDE about the water, we'll schedule another meeting with IDA and ICA that involves Frank and what's the guy's name?
Oh, give me Isaac enough.
Isaac enough.
Isaac, yeah.
And so, and Peter and I, Tom, sometimes the mayor, it's, it's just, it's a flexible group of people that meet. And, you know, we, we're trying to iron this thing out, but it has to be done in a certain, particular way.
And so, and so Barney, any idea how long it will be at the state level?
No, I, I know they asked for some information. One, one of the things had to do with the county providing the land outside of just that property for recharge.
Oh, okay.
Because there would be more in the Gillis Falls area that would have to be dedicated to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I think they were gonna work on a map to show where those properties are.
Okay.
And so, the state is actually waiting on a couple items like that. But that's...
Don't hurry.
Leslie?
Yeah.
There was an article in Frederick News Post this morning, front page, above the fold, very significant, because Comcast is announcing, given the economic development momentum that's going on in Frederick, Frederick City.
Right.
That they're going ahead and announcing their intent to upgrade their infrastructure capability for a hundred meg plus, okay, in the downtown area and on portions of two-seventy and fifteen that are adjacent to that. Harrison LaShire, as it was laid out to us, was the opportunity of our proximity to the fiber backbone in Carroll County that would provide the same capability.
So, are they talking about doing fiber, Comcast?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, the Carroll County fiber backbone is the most progressive fiber installation in the state.
I keep hearing that, but...
You really need to understand, you, you need to understand the significance of this.
How can we tap into it? I keep trying to figure it out if I can get it, but...
Well, that's the whole point. The, the whole point is, although libraries and schools and fire companies and so forth supposedly were to be hooked up, I don't believe in, and I'm not a techie, so I can't say this with assurance, that we have that full capability. However, the potential, the opportunity of the OPE of Harrison LaShire and the kind of high-tech inhabitants for that office park, that could be the entree for us to have that proximity and even pull it into downtown or Center Street or the other areas where we want to have that type of infrastructure going forward. That would make a huge difference.
So, you're saying, you think that having Harrison LaShire will encourage them to bring, to come in here?
I'm saying, this is part of, of the planning discussion, this is part of the engineering discussion. There's a significance, a leverage opportunity for Harrison LaShire that helps us in this regard. Obviously, there's a huge difference in our side versus the Frederick City. There's a huge difference in the economic potential and momentum they already have underway.
Leslie, one more very interesting thing, okay? As this will be, this, this land will be annexed by us, this body will decide what goes on that property.
That's true.
We already have.
That's true.
Okay, then, I mean, we, we know what we want and what, but you'll design, you'll decide what it looks like.
Right, that's right. Good point.
So, you know, this, this is a, this is a win-win. Now, if, if we don't, if we decide not to annex the land, they're building it anyway.
Right, right, right.
They will, they will do it their way.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Go the Carroll County's way.
Right, right.
But, you know, just don't forget, this body right here will design what goes on.
Right, right, yeah.
That was one of the most important things we were talking about the other day.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah. Yes, thanks for that reminder. Anything else on Harrison LaShire? Or on anything else that Bob gave, Bob's report?
No, I'm, I'm good.
You good? Okay. Downtown master plan, we kind of touched on already. Anybody?
Yeah, I attended, they also had this stakeholders meeting where they had extra people go in. So, I had, they did one-on-ones with I don't know how many people. Do you know how many extra people there were, Heather?
I do not. The interviews, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Wow, I'd say probably at least a dozen.
I, I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they had them all in one day and they scheduled you for like a half an hour. And they, you know, asked different questions about different things that you, you know. But they've completed those too as well, so they're well on their way. Doing an, I, doing an excellent job. So, that's awesome.
There's, there's one other possible item here that, that could be added going forward because Roxanne and I volunteered and we got accepted and voted into being on the board of Maryland Planning Commission Association.
Right.
We, we have meetings, we have updates roughly on a quarterly basis at a minimum. So, we'd be more than happy, I think, you know, to provide a, a short, brief update, you know, where that, where that stands in, in its significance for, for Mount Airy.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So, the one thing you can put on your calendar is their annual meeting, which is gonna be the, the week, last weekend in October, and it's gonna be held in Gaithersburg.
Oh, is that, that's the one we went to? Yeah, that's what we went to.
Yes, yeah.
And actually, what, right. And what they're hoping about doing, this is the thirtieth anniversary of Kentlands.
Oh, wow, that's amazing.
The development of Kentlands.
The very first.
Very first, MXD, yes, yeah. So, they're gonna try to kind of concentrate on that and get some, hopefully, speakers about everything that went into that, the different, you know, things that happened and how it became, how it developed and how it came about. So, they're hoping to get some of that input in the, in the conference. It is a kind of a day and a half thing. It's a Thursday evening, Friday conference, but it's close. So, if you can only make it for a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, and you can get it apart, yeah.
You can make budget spreads.
I work down there. I already put a party in for the budget.
Yeah.
No hotel, though.
Right, you don't have to, you don't have to have a hotel.
Have to pay for your hotel.
Couldn't swing that since it's a Gaithersburg.
They're trying to get it at the Holiday Inn, I think, down there.
Yeah, cool.
Oh, that's right by me. I'm right across the street.
Over you.
There you go, you can go to work and walk.
Yeah, there you go. No excuses.
I will be there. Unless my granddaughter's in town.
Oh.
I promise, I've been trying, that was gonna say.
Okay, I think we're, we're good with that? Alright, and so the next planning commission meeting is May twenty-first, so that's a week earlier because of Memorial Day. See you all there, if not before. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, you want me to, should we drop a motion to adjourn?
I moved, so moved.
I'm, I'm, we're, we're moved, thank you. We, we would've been stuck here all night.
Alright.
It's like, it's like that train in Boston.